I'd like to call the Waterworks Board meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022 to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Yes, we have Councilman Rod Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief Dave Meyer.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson. NICE Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Andy Hansen.
Here.
Director of Operations Jim Gorman.
Here.
Town Manager Robert Volkman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal.
Present.
And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Troxel. The Waterboard consists of three members, myself, Councilman Kevin Conley, and Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis. So we will take Councilman Caleb and Councilman Tom Schmidt and remove them from the roll call for the Waterworks meeting. Minutes of the September 14th, 2022 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
And motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you, pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Any reports from staff?
No reports.
Councilmembers?
No report.
No.
There is no old business or new business. I will take any business from the floor regarding Waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding Waterworks. Please step up to the microphone, please, and state your name and your address.
Okay, Veronica Clement, 328 Deer Trail Lane. I moved into a townhouse there that's 1,200 square feet. I've been paying over $70 a month for my water bill. Inquired numerous times about it. I was told that I have an extra large meter in my house. So in order to get it decreased in size to pay what everyone else is paying, which is about $45 in a 1,200 square foot townhouse, I would have to pay. So I had to pay over $600 to have a new water meter brought in. After I did that, my bill still came back for another, it'll come back for another two months for this $70, even though I had paid an exorbitant amount to have a new water meter put in. And come to find out that this water meter for this 1,200 square foot townhome was above the size that should have been put in. So I'm very upset that, number one, it was approved for a townhouse. And number two, that I've been having to pay this astronomical amount for all this time. Every time I call, it's just the way it is. That's the way it is. That's what you're gonna pay. And not only that, but I only use less than $1,000 gallons of water. And I get overcharged for wastewater, sanitation, and hydrants. And again, I'm using less than 1,000 gallons of water, and I'm paying the maximum for all of these in a townhouse, which is 1,200 square feet. So there's multiple issues here. And I know that's the way it is, but I want to bring it to people's attention. Because in this day and age, with people, you know, especially single women living, you know, alone, and I'm using very little water, and I'm getting charged. If you went to the grocery store and they charged you double, what would happen to everybody? Okay, so this is unfair, and I'm bringing it to the board. I want people to hear about it. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. I've lived in many different places, and I've never had such a thing happen. I've talked to other towns, they don't do that. They charge you for what you use. You go to NIPSCO, they're not gonna overcharge you. They charge you for what you use. There's a minimum, but you don't get charged the maximum always. And this has been for five years that I've lived there. So now I've paid the $600. Then I had to pay a plumber to come fix it for me, to put the other pipe in. And now another two months I will be overcharged again. And I just think it's unfair. It's just unfair.
Mr. Gorman or Mr. Volkman? Any replies?
The meter charges are, minimum charges are based on the meter size. I would agree with her that, you know, the reason there was a one-inch meter in that place, I can't explain it, was not, we don't dictate the meter size. That is done by the developer and the builder. He requests the meter size for any unit. And there's a minimum charge for water uses or water service based on meter charge, irregardless of what it is. A three-quarter inch meter, which is pretty much a standard for a residential unit of that size, you know, I don't know what the original reason for a one-inch meter was in there, but that was what was there. And those charges are what are set out by the IURC in our rate structure. So there is a minimum charge. And, you know, if you're only using 1,000 gallons a month, you'd still be charged that minimum, which would be up to 5,000.
Right, I'm being charged for 5,000 gallons of water. I am being charged the maximum.
You're being charged for a usage charge, which includes up to 5,000 gallons each month. So that's the minimum charge for that meter. For a three-quarter inch meter, it's 2,000 gallons a month is the minimum charge. So it doesn't have anything to do with usage. That's the usage charge, and it's based on that.
So I guess it doesn't make sense that you charge people according to the size of the meter instead of what they use.
That's a standard throughout the industry. If you look around, all of the other communities have a minimum charge.
For water?
For water, that's correct.
Okay, so I've lived in Dyer, I've lived in Munster.
Dyer has one.
They charged me by the amount of water I used.
But they have a minimum charge. And so you're not being charged, you're being charged a meter charge based on the size of the meter. So that's the initial charge, and it's based on a usage, but not actual usage.
Okay, so explain to me why I get overcharged for wastewater, sanitation, and hydrant, which is the maximum, when I'm using less than 1,000 gallons? That has nothing to do with the meter. Nothing to do with the meter. Wastewater and sanitation and hydrant have nothing to do with the meter.
Again, it's all based on the meter size. All of those charges were, are based on meter sizes.
Okay, so does that make any sense to anybody? Because I'm totally overcharged for that because of the size of the meter. It shouldn't even be in a 1,200 square foot townhouse.
President. Yes, Mr. Troxel?
Yeah, just a clarification. Your sanitation, that's a flat fee, has nothing to do with your water meter. That's $21.50 per month for your garbage pickup service. So that has nothing to do with your water meter. And there's a hydrant fee on there, that's $3.80, that also has nothing to do with your meter. That's a flat rate that gets charged to every resident.
Okay, so my neighbors are all paying $40 for their water, and I'm paying 70. So something is awry here.
Okay, well, their bill also includes the $3.80 and the $21.50 on their water bill. I'm not sure what size meter they have or what their usage is on that. I don't know what it is.
And again, I don't know how it gets approved, but it's through the town. The town of Shererville has to approve for these water meters to be approved, to go into these houses. So somebody should be responsible for letting a builder to put in a water meter up to 5,000 gallons? It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Maybe Mr. Hanson can answer this. Did I hear you right, though? You had a one-inch meter, and now you've gone down to three-quarter inch meter?
I had the largest meter, yeah, the one-inch meter. I had to pay for them to come in. I had to pay almost $600 for the new meter. And yet, because your water bills are two months behind, I have to pay that. Even though I have the smaller meter, for the next two months, I have to pay the maximum again, even though I have a new meter in. Because the water bills are two months behind.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then at that point, her bill would be the same as her neighbor's? She should...
Her bill, yeah, she's gonna go down to...
Same minimum.
She went down to the three-quarter inch meter. Why there was a one-inch meter, and I know that Bobby Thomas built those, gosh, that was 20 years ago. And I know the first buildings, he put one-inch meters in all of them. I don't know if they planned on putting sprinkler systems in. I don't know if you have a sprinkler system.
No, nobody has sprinklers systems.
I don't know if he planned on doing that. I can't tell you what his reasoning behind putting one-inch meters in. I have a one-inch meter in my house, but it's because I have a sprinkling system. You know, so it is what they put in there. We don't...
But nobody else in my neighborhood, I'm like one of the few that has the maximum size water meter. So again, that doesn't make sense.
I can't go back in time and tell you what his reasoning was. You know, maybe there was anticipated that was gonna have a sprinkling system hooked up there. I can't really answer that for you. But the rates and charges are based on the meter size. You know, if you look at like a two-inch meter, which, you know, that would be typically on a restaurant or building this size, it has a minimum charge of 25,000 gallons a month. You know, so every, as you go up the increments of meter sizes, that usage charge or base charge goes up.
Okay, so if I use more water, are you gonna charge me for the more water I use?
That's how it works.
Over 2,000, yes.
Yeah, so if I overuse, I'm gonna get charged for that. But I'm underusing, but I'm gonna get charged the maximum anyway.
Because you have a minimum. There's a minimum charge for just having the service, and that's basically what you're paying. Is to have the service, and the minimum charge is based on 2,000 gallons a month now for a three-quarter inch meter. With a one-inch meter, it's 5,000. I have the same issue during the winter in my own house, because there's just myself and my wife. And so a lot of times, we're only using, in the wintertime, 2,000 gallons a month, but I still have to pay like I was using 5,000. But that's because I have a sprinkling system.
I'm just bringing it to people's attention, because I just don't think it's fair. And I've lived many different places, and I've never had this. So I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention, that that's, that's just unfair. You can't go to the gas station, and I'm gonna pump my gas, and you're gonna charge me for more than I get. It's just not right. I don't care if you've got a theory about a meter or not. In this day and age, you should not be charging people for things that they did not use.
And again, ma'am, I'm trying to say, is it's a minimum charge that inclusive of 2,000 gallons or 5,000 gallons on the meter size? So irregardless of how much you use, the initial bill will be that minimum amount. That's the minimum charge, and it's based on that volume. You could do the same thing. You could just have it up to, at 2,000 gallons, start the meter, but you're still gonna pay a minimum charge for having the service. You do the same thing with NIPSCO, having NIPSCO Electric and Gas. They have a minimum charge every month just for your having the service to your house. Whether you use it or not, you're still gonna pay.
I wouldn't pay the, mind doing the minimum, but I'm paying the maximum. I'm paying for 5,000 gallons of water. That's all I'm bringing to everyone's attention.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business from the floor regarding Waterworks? Any other business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We will now move into the redevelopment meeting.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. The time is 7:21 PM. The Redevelopment Commission consists of the entire town council. So with that being said, we'll bring in council members Caleb Johnson and Tom Schmidt. Minutes of the September 14th, 2022 public meeting, pleasure of the board.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This is five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This is five zero. Reports, I know from staff, we have one discussion of the creation of an area in the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, as an economic development area. Who wants to take this, Mr. Gorman or Mr. Volkman?
I'll take that, Mr. Conley. Thank you very much. Yeah, we are looking to, as you can see, there's a map up on the, up on the board here. Let me just, yeah, make it a little darker. We're looking to create an economic development area along Route 30. Basically, the boundaries are from the Maryville border on the north side of 30. If you can follow that green line, it goes east and then up north, all across 75th, down to Klein, west to Austin Avenue, and then it comes down, head south, goes along 30, or, I'm sorry, what is that? Thank you. 77th, down to Roarman Road, captures all of the Illiana Speedway, and then jogs around, back up to 30, and then goes along the south side of 30. And the reason we're doing that is to capture some of the tax increment for the Illiana properties and any properties for infrastructure, future development, job creation. We'll have that. It's similar to the Kennedy Avenue Tiff District that we have now. This is not an agenda item, but we do have the resolution in hand. Everybody has a copy. Looking for you guys to make a motion to approve that tonight.
Mr. Gorman, could you explain the process, beginning with if we do approve the resolution tonight, what the next steps are?
Sure, it's a four-step process. There's gonna be a total of four resolutions. So if this is accepted and adopted tonight, it'll move to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will have a similar resolution, although separate. And it'll get approved through them. It'll come back to the town council. They'll have to approve the plan that went to the Planning Commission. And then it'll go back to the Redevelopment Commission, back to you guys again, for a fourth public hearing, resolution at a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gorman? With that, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, motion to approve the resolution to create an area in the town of Sher... Create an area in the town of Shererville, Lake County, as an economic development area as shown on the display and attached to the resolution.
That is, excuse me, that is 2022-4, that resolution number. Sorry about that.
Yes, thank you.
Resolution 2022-4.
In a second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, pleasure of the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. This is five zero. Thank you. Any reports from any additional staff members?
No report.
Okay, councilmembers?
No report.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any old business, and we do not have any new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Shererville Utility Board meeting to order for Wednesday, October 12th, at approximately 7:26 PM. For, the roll call stays the same as the Redevelopment Commission. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the September 14th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims for Utilities, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second on claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Volkman?
No report.
Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
Mr. Hanson from Public Works. And our engineer, Mr. Neil Simstad.
No report.
Thank you. Any reports from councilmembers?
No.
And we have no old business on the agenda. We'll move right into new business. Item A is consider proposal from NICE Engineering for engineering services for the Shererville wastewater treatment plan improvements for the American Rescue Plan Act projects.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Simstad.
The proposal you have in front of you is for the rehabilitation of aeration tanks 11 through 14, which will complete the entirety of the aeration tanks that were started initially with the American Rescue and Recovery Act projects back in 2009. And the clarifiers 1 through 4, modifications and upgrades to the equipment at those two projects. The estimated construction amount that has been submitted in the five-year capital improvement plan for the aeration tanks is 1.6 million. The construction amount for the replacement of the secondary clarifiers 1 through 4 is $1,060,000. The work and scope included with either of those two projects is shown. And the proposal is a not-to-exceed amount for $128,200. The value that we have for that being less than 5% of design, which is typically lower than we'd have for plant work, is based on the prior experience we have with the rehabilitation of those aeration tanks 1 through 10 that were priorly completed. And for the clarifiers, our work is gonna be strictly related to assisting staff with material, equipment selection, and bidding, rather than a complete design on those four secondary clarifiers. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Simstad?
Yeah, just one. This is not to exceed on both projects, correct?
Correct.
So this includes both, okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
I have one question. Neil, is there a timeline, do you think, for getting that ready for bid?
And Jim can correct me, but I believe the five-year capital plan that was included in your recent wastewater rate analysis was 2024 for the aeration tanks 11 through 14, and 2025 completion for clarifiers 1 through 4. Internally, we're looking to have design work done, and any IDEM permitting required to be done by the end of 2023, so that those projects can be either advanced or held back with permits in hand as funds allow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Simstad?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up the business from the floor. Is there any comments regarding Utilities from the floor? Any comments? No comments from the floor. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the town council.
I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. The roll call will remain the same as the previous meeting of the Utility Board. First on the agenda would be the minutes of the September 14th, 2022 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next thing on the agenda is claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims are approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we move on to reports, starting from my left. Deputy Chief Meyer?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Deputy Chief McNamara?
Nothing to report.
Park Superintendent John Novosich?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Neil Simstad?
No report.
Public Works Director Andy Hansen?
No report.
And Director of Operations Jim Gorman?
Yes, I do have one report. I just wanted to let the council know that we did apply for a federal railroad administration grant that was submitted yesterday to help fund the bridge going over the tracks at Kennedy Avenue. And that was submitted on time, and it was for a little over $8 million that we applied for. So just wanted everyone to be aware that that was done, and with the help of our consultant and our Clerk Treasurer Department, as well as Andy, who was a big part of it, and Jeff, of course, Jeff Hewitt, we got that done. It was a group effort, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you for all the effort.
And Tom and Kevin, as well, getting us the, Mr. Conley and Mr. Schmidt for getting us those letters of support from our congressman and our House of Representatives and all the entities out there. Thank you.
Thank you to you and everyone. Mr. Volkman, Town Manager, any reports?
No reports.
And are there any reports from the council?
Nope, no reports.
Thank you. Moving on, public comments regarding agenda items. We have public comments regarding agenda items, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Any? No? Okay, moving on. We'll start with old business. Item A, ordinance 1987, adoption of 2023 Civil Town Budget. This is the second reading.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Councilmembers, as we did last month, we had a public hearing on this ordinance, number 181987. And the public hearing was held and was approved by this body here to move forward with the preparing of documents for the adoption for this evening. Since that meeting, we did not receive any remonstrations against our proposed budget that was passed last month. And we're in order here for adoption of this budget. So before you, you have similar numbers that were there from last year, actually the same numbers, but it does have the adopted tax rate that will be suggested to be passed this evening. That adopted tax rate on a property taxes is, that's being proposed, is .6959. That is high, as I stated before, and we do expect that to be lowered by the Department of Local Government Finance once we submit this within the next five days after it's adopted. To put in comparison, last year at this time, when we adopted it, the adopted budget was at a rate of... One second. .7434. So what we're adopting this evening is lower than what it was adopted last year. Last year's adopted budget that we proposed was .7434. It came back from the Department of Local Government Finance at .5482. So we do expect the same thing to happen this year, is at a proposed rate of .6959. I do expect it to be less than half percent at .4959, roughly there, so. Which will lower, it's a lower tax rate to our, those that pay property taxes.
Thank you.
Madam President, move to adopt ordinance 1987.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Item A, consider release of two-year maintenance certi, $3,0750, and issuance of certificate of release for BORSH addition.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a one-lot subdivision. It's basically a refund to the homeowner or the builder for the, for the cash certi that they had for minor public improvements. So it's basically just a refund back to them after the two years.
Move to approve, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item B, consider release of irrevocable letter of credit number C L seven four five zero L C and issue certificate of release for April Tree Estates, Phase One.
Thank you, Madam President. This is similar to the one before it, except this one's for a subdivision, so we are taking ownership. It's been two years as well. We're taking, all the punch list items are done, all the public improvements have been done, and we're taking ownership of those public improvements, so that we're releasing that letter of credit.
Move to approve, Madam President.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item C, consider approval to extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the F F C R A, which expired September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, to compensate up to eighty hours paid leave to employees that are off work due to COVID nineteen, retroactive to October first, two thousand twenty-two, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is a subject that's been on our agenda a few times this year. We went usually quarters, sometimes less than a quarter for the extension. COVID cases are going up. It seems like lately we've had just, the town employees, we've had eight cases since October first to, up to yesterday. So we're looking for that extension of this program that we have. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Madam President, Jim, what's the procedure here? Is this still a one-time usage or is this where they've had it in the past and they can use it again? How are we administering this?
Yeah, it's a one-time use. They, um...
Not per extension, right?
No, no, no. If, yeah, they have, they can use up to eighty hours. They have to be out of the office for at least ten days. They do get, usually if they get symptoms, they take a home test. If the home test is positive, we require a PCR test. So they have to show proof. They go to a clinic or Walgreens. They show proof that, from a PCR test, that they are positive, and that's when the cycle starts.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item D, consider proposal from NICE Engineering for engineering services for the Sherwell wastewater treatment plan improvements for the American Rescue Plan Act projects. This is from the utility board agenda.
Move to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item E, consider variance of use to allow a drive-through within the U S thirty commercial corridor overlay district, B Z A case number twenty-two dash nine dash twenty-five. The petitioners, Sumac Incorporated, Nick Giorgio, apologize if that's wrong, location two seven five, U S thirty. This came with a favorable recommendation to the town council, four to zero.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a commercial lot just on the east side of Dairy Queen at Route Thirty and Austin, and they're looking to put a drive-through in. It's a small building with four units in it, and the drive-through would be, actually, the window would be on the west side of that, that building that they are proposing to build. And I don't see the petitioner here tonight, but I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Reddick here from D V G is here to represent.
Okay.
If you'd like to ask him any questions.
Madam President, I do have a couple of questions.
Again, Doug Reddick from D V G, we're working with Sumac Architects on this project. We'll be doing the site engineering on it. It is a proposed retail center with four units, with the Dunkin' Donuts being the primary anchor in the west side, but they, they need a drive-through. It's a Dunkin' Donuts to, you know, make the project worthwhile. I'm told that the project will not advance if they don't get the drive-through. They have not bought the property yet. I do have, I brought one drawing just in case anybody wants to see it, and some renderings, but it's kind of a good-looking building. If you want me to pass this around real quick, if you want to see it, but it's a pretty simple site plan, again, right next to the Dairy Queen.
I brought, I brought the one that I had from B Z A and showed everybody. I had a couple of questions, Doug. One, I'm, I like the development. I like the, the plan. I think Dunkin' Donuts is a good fit there. My concern is traffic and parking.
Sure.
Particularly with the unknown of the other three users of that building, time that they're going to be there and open and busy and, and hopefully having a successful business run. If they coincide timing-wise with Dunkin' Donuts, it's going to be a nightmare in, in my mind, you know. So if we have another breakfast joint or another busy morning entity that comes in there, I'm worried, because there aren't that many parking spaces. There's only one entrance and exit to the, to the facility or to that location. I'm wondering, was there ever contemplation of a second driveway to, to allow for a little bit better access and egress from the, the site?
Actually, the, the original plan had two, both on the south side, but the one entrance was so close to the other access road, it, it didn't work well for traffic flow. And it was felt by the architect and, and us that this would actually work better.
So, so originally, it was drawn with two on the south side, one was right close to the residences driveway?
And you have to come in on the access road and make a hard turn, and then cars would be possibly backing up, which we, we didn't think was a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. I, it is, it is challenged there with that access road being curved like that.
It is, it is.
Any thought about a smaller building to allow for less congestion on the site?
Not that I'm aware of. This is, I think what they feel, they need the square footage. These are not real big units. They're only about twenty-five hundred, twenty-one hundred square feet each. So they're not big spaces. They don't need a lot of parking, but they don't have other tenants at all yet. So we, we do not know exactly what's going to go in there. We forecasted the best they could as far as parking counts, forty-one parking spaces required and forty-five are provided. So we have a few extra parking spaces based on the use. They're not all going to be restaurants. We know that we can't accommodate restaurants. I think we accommodated one other small restaurant. The other ones will be retail. So it's not, it's not going to be all food establishments, for sure.
Is there a way, logistically, to double stack and get more cars behind the building there?
I think they want to have the bypass lane. That's the plan right now. And by doing it the way we did it, we, we have quite a bit of stacking on the property and not on a public road. Actually, in this case, this is a private road. The access road is actually a private road.
Do you know how many cars they anticipate being able to stack?
We could easily accommodate twelve without impeding any other parking spaces, and that's...
Yeah, any idea what their peak stacking is?
They don't, I don't have that information.
They don't give you that?
I, I, I'm sorry.
That's all the questions I have right now, Madam President.
Thank you.
Just a comment, Madam President, observation. You know, Dairy Queen's going to be busy when Dunkin' Donuts is not. You know, Dunkin's more of the breakfast crowd. You know, Dairy Queen's a bit later in the day, so that's a benefit in terms of, of traffic. We don't have conflicting traffic with two side-by-side businesses.
Madam President?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick, the owner of the Dunkin' Donuts will be the same owner that owns the other Dunkin' Donuts in Sherwell?
I'm quite sure it is.
So, so there's probably the idea that that's going to eliminate some of that business up there?
Right, share it, split it up a little bit.
Split the business up a little bit? And going back to what Mr. Johnson said, is the, are you concerned about the curve as being, I, I noticed your entrance and exit is, you only have one. You can't put an entrance to the east of there. Is that because you're concerned about the curve?
Well, it's too close to traffic coming in off of Route Thirty, because they'd have to make, they'd have to make a hard right turn, and I felt that that was not a good move either, to have it on the east side.
So there is no room for another entry at all?
Well, again, we had two on the south side, and it, it just didn't work too well. We, we discussed it with the planning commission briefly, and then we revised it to this. It, it seems to work the best.
Thank you.
And when you talk about having the two south entrances, Doug, it'd be similar to what the Dairy Queen has, where they come in?
It would be similar, but the easterly one would be very close to the ninety-degree bend in the access road, and that's where the problem would be. It's, it would be hard to make that maneuver safely, and that's why I decided to move it over and go to the one entrance.
Okay. I could ask a question. Doug, how wide is that entrance?
Typically, we'd go twenty-five feet, but if need be, we can go a little wider to make it easier for... It's not, it's not a problem to go a little bit wider. Minimum would be twenty-five, but we could easily go to thirty feet.
Madam President, another question that just kind of came into my mind here. Where's the loading and unloading going to be? Is there a, a loading dock area?
Not really a loading dock. It's kind of unique because the building has, you know, the rear of the building is actually going to face Route Thirty. The front, where the parking lot is, will be to the south, but there will be doors on the, on the backside, in the driveway in the back. They, they don't get a lot of deliveries, so loading will be from the north side with, through the rear doors, and I would think if deliveries, like packages, would be on the south side to the front door, but any other delivery would be on the north side.
It's just hard to, hard to imagine yet, because we don't know who the users are. We know Dunkin' and, and maybe Dunkin' doesn't get a lot of deliveries, but the next one to the east may be a ton, and, and now it's right on Thirty, right, right there where everybody's seeing it.
They were just talking about making that patio area smaller if need be. They wanted the idea of some outdoor seating, but they think it's larger than it needs to be, so if we had to make a, a spot for a truck to pull off, I think they could accommodate that pretty easily.
And Miss, Mr. Gorman, and so, any, any of the other three businesses would still have, or this would have to come, still come through the planning commission, correct?
No, no, they would just apply for business licenses.
Still have to get site plan approved.
Yeah, yeah, the site plan would have to be approved.
So, yes.
But we're still not going to know who the, who the tenants are.
Well, the planning commission would be able to filter out some of those issues.
Yeah.
With what type of business goes in there, due to, due to the space that they have, due to the entrances they have, they would be able to filter that out.
Yep, they, those, they can put those conditions on.
Okay.
I know this isn't pertinent to a drive-through, but there's no sidewalk planned here. Is that required for development here?
Sidewalk on...
Sidewalks along the access road?
None planned. It's a private road and the property line goes right up to the edge of the road.
The what?
The property line goes right up to the edge of the road, and it's a private road. So we typically put sidewalks on public roads, but this is private.
I just didn't know if people from residences might want to walk on over. All right, I got no more questions.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
The consideration for the variance to allow a drive-through within the U S thirty commercial corridor overlay district, B Z A case came to us twenty-two dash nine dash twenty-five. I would like to make a motion to approve the drive-through variance of use.
We have a motion?
Second with the condition, if I may. Can we include the widening of the driveway?
The drive-through?
You can impose that.
Driveway, from twenty-five to thirty.
Happily.
To, to exit. I just want to make sure I understand the exit. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion?
We have to change the motion.
Would you like me to include that in my motion? I will.
Yes, and I'll resecond.
All right. I, I'll make a motion to approve with the, with the condition of expanding the, the entrance drive in, in and out, to thirty feet instead of the twenty-five?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item F, consider variance to, of use to allow fifteen twenty-by-ten portable storage containers to be placed yearly within the fenced garden center and to be placed on or after September first and removed no later than January thirty-first of the following year. This is B Z A case twenty-two dash nine dash twenty-six. The petitioner is Walmart Stores Incorporated, location one five five five, U S forty-one. This came with a favorable recommendation to the town council, four to zero.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is Walmart on the south side. They have a garden area that's fenced in. They're looking to, they did this last year. They're looking to put fifteen of those storage containers to store all of their summer gear, their summer merchandise, and they're going to put it there September fifteenth, make sure it's gone by January thirty-first. They also would need to get permits every year for these storage containers, and I'm not sure if there's a representative here from Walmart or not, but I may be able to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Madam President?
Yes.
Are, are the storage containers going to be painted or a certain color, or?
No, I'm, I'm certain they just come from wherever they rent them from, or maybe they own, I don't know if they, I don't think they own them. I think they're just the ones like you see on the railroad, on the rails, you know, on the trains and stuff. That's what they look like last year.
But they will be visible through the chain link fence?
I do believe so, yes. I would say yes.
At the B Z A meeting, they indicated that they had screening on the fence previously, but they took that down and they don't plan to put that back up, just to answer your, I guess, your concern, Tom.
Did they say why?
He said, I, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he said something along the lines of it was looking bad, so they took it down. And I don't believe they intend to put it back up. I don't know if it was tattered and old. I don't remember how bad it looked, but I, I do remember it being there in years past, and it is definitely not there any longer.
Yeah, it could have been from lack of maintenance. They weren't, you know, the wire ties they used busted off. Not really sure it was blowing in the wind. I, I really don't know.
Well, I, I really think they should do something. I mean, because it, you know, it's not the most prettiest sight, that's for sure. Yeah, I think in the, in the garden center, it is better than out in the parking lot, at least. So I think it is an improvement there from aesthetic, you know, but I think we should screen it or something like, like Tom was talking, that, you know, it should have some sort of uniform color or a screening or something from the visible drive-by side. I also had a concern, and I, I've mentioned this in the past, I know, to others just in talking, but I, I mean, this may be our opportunity here. When you use their online order area, or if you're coming from Sophia's, out onto that road between Sophia's and Walmart there, and you go west towards the Dunkin' Donuts, towards the parking lot, and you try and make a turn out of that road onto the, the, whatever service road that is, that goes out to Route Thirty there, it is really difficult to see to the right, when you're trying to look towards oncoming traffic there to the right and safely make that turn out. So I, I personally think that if they have the ability, they're messing with this storage area, the garden area, the fencing and stuff, I think if, if we can put a condition on this to maybe pull back that corner just a little bit, so that it's more safe for drivers leaving their online order pickup area and from Sophia's there to, to pull out onto the roadway. I, I would be in favor of that personally. the roadway, I, I would be in favor of that personally.
And perhaps the screening is another condition.
And then the screening is a second condition. Everybody good with that? Do you, I'll make a motion, then.
If I could just interrupt?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Mr. Johnson? Um, and if you could detail the screening, like, do you want it on the, the west side and the south side? Because that's basically all you can see.
That would be the sides, I would think.
Okay. If you could just note that.
I will.
Your motion?
Motion to approve the variance of use to allow 15 20-by-10 portable storage containers to be placed yearly within the fenced garden center, and to be placed on or after September 15th and removed no later than January 31st of the following year, but with the two following conditions. One, pull back the southwest corner of the garden, fenced garden center, so that it is safer for traffic and drivers to pull out from that roadway. I guess at least four feet, so that they have more visibility there at that corner. And the second condition being that the portable containers are, you can screen the fence of the garden center again, or screen the containers themselves on the west and south side.
Paint them all consistent?
Or paint them all consistent color, I guess that's another option. If it's, if it's painted the same color as the building, then...
I don't think they can paint them, though, those are owned by freight companies.
They're probably not theirs, so they're probably not painting them.
So with that, I will second that motion.
Thank you, Rob.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item G, consider acceptance of donations in the amount of $5,281.92.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. We received in donation funds, one particular police and fire to 9/11 memorial, a donation from Shirley Ann Harold for $20. The Sherivale Police Department had an anonymous donation of $10, and Loretta Kujawa $25, for a total of $55 to the police and fire 9/11 memorial. Donation of fund to the police equipment fund, Stephen and Judy Davis donated $200, Paul Rudnick Jr., $500, and Absolute Construction Incorporated donated $2,500, for a total of $3,200 to the police equipment fund. And to the Cume Cap Development Fund regarding the dog run, Rita Burke donated $100, and from the Sherivale Lions Club, we received a donation of $1,026.92, for a total into that fund for the dog run, $2,026.92. For the month of September, we received a total of $5,281.92.
Thank you.
Move, move to approve, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve five to zero. Next on the agenda would be business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing done, this meeting is adjourned.